Call to order, the Lake Mills City Council for May 1st, 2018. Would we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Frich?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Frich?
Here.
Blaze Knipplehead called me today and said he would not be able to make tonight's meeting.
Okay. Corrections and approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes of April 17th, 2018. I want to do that one separate. I want to, well, first I need a motion to approve, and then I have something to bring up.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. We have two changes. One in the paragraph called "Election of Council Vice President." In the second and third line, we have a typo there because we have me being appointed to the council vice president. I think it got copied from the one above it. So if you would change that to Mr. Foster. Everything else is right, it just that, and should be City Council Vice President instead of President. And then I'd also like to make a correction under correspondence. The third line said Ms. Schmidt was contacted requesting the council to keep children's library. That was me, not Vicki. So, so I would like to have someone make a motion for those two changes in the minutes.
I move that we make those corrections to the meeting minutes.
Second.
Mr. Foster, second. All those in favor of the amendment?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Abstain.
Mrs. Frich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Okay. So that is the amendment is now on the minutes. We need to vote on the minutes themselves. And we already have a motion on the floor. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Abstain.
Mrs. Frich?
Aye.
Okay. Then I'd like to move to the other two minutes. The City Council work session of April 17th, and the City Council special meeting minutes of April 19th. If someone would like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Frich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Abstain.
Motion passed 4-0 with Mr. Fields abstaining.
So, that moves us to number four, correspondence. Someone like to start?
I've had a number of them. I also was contacted about the alleyway earlier also. I was contacted also this morning, or today, about the Frontier parking lot, that there's a lot of asphalt breaking up there, and they're looking at possibly getting down into the storm drains. I'll have to look into that one. I was also contacted the other day about Burning Prairie in the city limits, and I was going to follow up with Steve on that one. I shot him over to email on it, asking him out if there's something that can be done about it. And then my final one is I've received several emails and a lot of phone calls about the EMS article, and what was discussed at the meeting about that. So, I'm sure that will continue on for discussions.
Anyone else have?
I was also contacted about the building on Water Street that appears to have some maintenance issues. I forwarded the email to Steve Wilkie and asked that he give it to the Public Works Director or Building Inspector as he deems appropriate. It looks like there's a possibility of doing some enforcement. The Frontier building, is what the complaint was about. I just emailed it to you.
And that's not the first time we've had a problem there, because I, last year, had complaints on that too. So that's not a brand-new issue. Okay, anyone else? Otherwise, I have something to... All right, I just delivered to the council members, but I also want to share with the public. The bandstand renovation project group have set a date for the commemoration of the Franklin Elzy Bandstand. And that date, and everybody can put this on your calendars if you're at home watching program, Wednesday, June 6th, in Commons Park at the Band Shelter at 7:00 PM. It's the site of the first band, a city band performance. It is also going to be recognition of Franklin Elzy's work in the city and at the high school and so forth. And Jim Ortl will be the conductor of the band that night. Jim Ortl is the person who took over after Franklin Elzy retired, so there's a little historical connection there. But if you would mark that date on your calendar, Wednesday, June 6th, at 7:00 PM in Commons Park. It's called the Encore Celebration. Okay. I do want to mention that I thought things went well with the Mulberry Street meeting last week for the residents. Most questions were answered, and those that didn't were working on getting answers for. But that is moving along well. That will be next year, so we will be doing both projects at the same time, South Main and Mulberries. Maybe we'll get a better quote on our bids for those two projects next year. Anybody else have any other correspondence? Okay. Let's move on. We're moving on to questions and public comment. Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Is there anyone who would wish to speak to the council at this time? Otherwise, if you're on the agenda for another item, you'll have an opportunity then if the council weaves the rules, so. Seeing nobody on their way to the podium, I will close public comment and move to city manager's report. Steve?
This month, Public Works Board is having their tour. So we will deal with the election of officers and a couple small items. The preliminary plat for Crestview, final plat, and the award of the bids for the maintenance for the summer. And then they'll go on their tour. And so they'll be out cruising in a bus. They see us on Facebook.
We always make the news with our bus.
Yep. The composting study will be up again at the Public Works Board meeting in June. So I'll be out there. The South Main Street, we're going to have Josh Hammer go door-to-door probably next week, because we're holding our meeting with WISTOT Friday morning to go over some issues. And we'll probably have Josh go door-to-door and let him know where we're at now. I assume maybe we'll get some new stuff to put on the webpage. You'll notice that they're fixing the sidewalks. They're tearing some out on the other side, but the ones on the west side, they're bringing up the standards.
Who's doing that?
Intercon.
Okay.
They're the subcontractor for We Energies.
Oh, okay. Because they're the ones who ripped it up.
Right.
Okay, that's why.
Again, it was anticipated the project would be done this year, so they went, you know, they went, had to do it. But now that it's put off a year, they're going to have to fix it up to standard. Mulberry Street, the paperwork for the real estate acquisitions has started. So, I think, I saw a document come through today that said that they were all taken care of except for three. And so you had gotten notices to disperse checks. East Lake Park Place, we got all our final documents, so we can actually make the final payment.
Good.
County Highway V sidewalk started today. Did anybody notice? No, it's okay.
What part of Highway V?
From BP West to the west edge of the cemetery.
Oh.
It's supposed to be done last year, but the weather got bad on it.
I listened over there today.
There was a bunch of barrels when I went over there today, so that must be where it was starting.
I think they, actually, what you would have noticed today was them cutting the asphalt at BP. The bike trail is just about done.
What do they still have to do?
They have to bring it up to final grade, and they have to grade the ditches, and then do the landscaping. So it's, it was close enough to final grade that they asked to have the measurements done today. The surveyors come in and GPS it, and they probably started the ditch today. So we're very close to being complete with that. We still have one document that we need to finalize with Mangan, but the building permits have been authorized. They haven't finalized their CSM yet, but we're anticipating that any day. You'll want to watch part of the maintenance street projects is the library parking lot. So that'll be in there. You'll see that as part of the bid. We completed our monthly LSL reporting yesterday. I hope that they accept it as is. Tonight, you have your radium CO on, and we are following up because we, part of the, the first part of the consent order is that we're required to do a study to determine what the best method for reducing the radium is, so we're following up on that. AMI activity has slowed a little bit, meters. They're still working on finalizing the radio connections and the download of the data, but they hope to, actually tomorrow, they're starting the training for the maintenance operations on them, and probably Friday, they'll finish that, at least a significant part of that will be finished up. I think next week, we'll be starting to replace the electric meters and actually go full online. Another thing that we have to do is a corrosion report. And that's where we have to determine how much phosphorus we have to put in our water. And we have a 70/30 mix right now, 30% phosphorus and 70% other materials that helps sequester iron and magnesium in our water. Whenever you mess with those levels, you get more magnesium and iron that settles out, so you tend to have places that might get red or black water. And the other issue is, is we're on such a small creek that we're required to remove the phosphorus from the water, so every bit that we put in, we have to take out at the other end. And so that affects our costs and our ability to meet our permits for the wastewater treatment plant. So that's going to be a particularly interesting study. We'll probably have to go into a demonstration study rather than just a review of the data. Our CMAR will be due soon. That's the Comprehensive Maintenance Annual Report for the wastewater treatment plant, so you'll see that in June. We had several private burn issues in the last week, and one of them that you asked about did have a permit.
They did have a permit?
They had a permit.
Okay.
There was another one on South Main Street that didn't have a permit. I don't know if anyone was contacted about that. The state is looking at taking the revolving loan funds back. So we've been noticed that we can't issue any more loans right now.
Right.
So, I guess we'll see how that goes.
Are we talking about the lead?
Pardon?
The lead?
No, this is, this is an economic development tool. We have, we have $500,000 in that revolving loan fund.
Okay.
And it looks like the state's going to ask for that money back.
Yeah, they always could.
Yes, they always could.
Will they take over the oversight on the loans that are out there, or don't we have any outstanding loans?
We have an outstanding one, and no, we'll have to manage it until it's done, and then return the money to, they just have projects where they're getting a little hamstrung and need the money. Other than that, are there any questions?
The Public Works Board meeting, is that next Tuesday?
That's next Tuesday.
And what time is it?
It starts at 5:00.
Okay.
I've been invited to attend the EMS board meeting next Monday at 6:30. And then I've been asked to participate in an interview with Chris. Next Tuesday, okay? Or did you pick a date?
Let me know if it's okay.
Okay. All right. I'll look at that.
Thank you. Number seven. Acceptance of minutes of the Planning Commission, March 27th, 2018. The Library Board, March 19th, 2018. Police and Fire Commission minutes, March 15th, 2018. Parks Board minutes for September 20th, 2017, and Parks Board minutes for November 15th, 2017. Those minutes will be, are accepted and put on file, will be put on file. Okay. Going to item eight. Oh, I forgot to ask. Under Council Business Boards and Committee Appointments, why is number one on there? Is that reappointment of our current council members? The ones that just were re-elected?
Yes, there's a potential to move them around, so if you wanted to make any changes on their appointments.
No, I'm very happy with my council. I'm not moving anybody anywhere, and don't anybody go away.
Well, I'm just thinking more along the lines of Vicki on Public Works.
Yes.
Mike on Plan Commission.
Oh.
Steve on Parks, and Doug on the Library.
Well, the council president has not given that any thought. She's been too busy doing other things with committee members. But if council members have concerns on that, please share that with me. But otherwise, I'm happy with how it is. You can let me out. We can always put that on a later agenda. Is that all right? Steve?
It's all right with me. It's all right with you.
Okay. Then I have reappointments and a couple new appointments. They're on the agenda. Number two, the Planning Commission members that are being reappointed is Josh Schumacher and Wayne Magnussen. Number three, Public Works Board member Ian Lehrer. Parks Board, Vicki Wickliffe. Library Board, Sandy Whistler and Karen Buscemi. Number six, Joint Rock Lake Committee, Glenn Zastro. Board of Review, Wayne Magnussen. Zoning Board of Appeals, Todd Temperley's reappointment. And I have two new appointees, Karen Roots and Benjamin Fleeger, both which will be filling in the alternate position on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Those have been empty for a while, and we're happy that they're willing to take the position. The Economic Development Commission, reappointment Todd Temperley. Ethics Board, reappointments Pamela Luzeris and Pamela Rogers. And the Extraterritorial Zoning Committee, Wayne Magnussen. And I'd also just like to make a blanket statement at this time. For the chairpersons that I appoint, I'm not making any changes at this time, so if you are the chair or were the chair, you still are the chair. And I'm not going to do it more formally than that unless something requires it. And at this point, I haven't found what that something is. And it takes us, oh, do we need to approve those? Okay. Is there a motion to make those appointments?
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion or concerns? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Frich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Did I vote? Did I get called? I did? Boy, I did that without thinking. Okay. B, City Manager Appointments, City Housing Authority, and Police and Fire Commission, go to Mr. Wilkie. I'll turn it over to you.
First, let me mention that of all the committee appointments that you made, we still have one open, and that's the Public Works Board.
Yes, thank you.
So if anybody's interested in signing up for a position on the Public Works Board, they can come in and get an application, or pick it up online and submit it. I'm making the appointment of that, reappointing Daniel Hunt to the Housing Authority. He's been on there for the last year. And I'm also appointing Russ Christensen, Chairman of the Police and Fire Commission.
Okay. And those are just your appointments? We don't approve those, right?
Announcements. Yep.
Okay. Miscellaneous licenses. Tavern Operator's License, Elena Voight. Would you, well, we need a motion to approve the...
I'll make a motion to approve the tavern operator license for Elena Voight.
Second.
Okay. And would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Frich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And that is for Walgreens, correct? I believe. D, Discussion Decision on the Lake Mills Cars &amp; Coffee Application for a Special Event. Is that, Steve, are you taking that one?
I can.
Okay.
It's become a regular.
Right.
Cars &amp; Coffee has a special event that they hold every Sunday, first Sunday of the month. And they hold it on Church and Campus Streets on the west side of the downtown. Their proposal is to do it pretty much the same way as they did it last year. They have filled out and got all the required approvals from staff to be able to do it, but they still have to go through the council in order to be able to block the right-of-way. So this authorizes them, actually, if they did it once, I could authorize it, but because they're doing it five times, the council has to do it.
And I did forget to mention, under correspondence, but I'll sneak it in here, did get notification that Winston Churchill is coming for the coffee and cars, and he is bringing his old car with him. So if you're into old English cars, show up at 8 o'clock on Sunday morning. And I'm sure there's lots of other good things, so. We need a motion to approve the application?
I move approval of motion 18-5-1-1.
I'll second it.
Okay. Do you want to read the title for that, please?
Motion 18-5-1-1, authorizing the temporary encroachment of Church and Campus Street right-of-way by Randy Stenson for Cars &amp; Coffee.
Okay. No changes as far as the footprint of this event this year.
No.
So I think everybody should know kind of what's going on, except people that are new to town. And if you're interested, go to the website. There's a map on there. It'll show you exactly where it is and so forth. So it's available to the public. Any comments or questions on it? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Frich?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Item E, Discussion Decision on Authorizing City Manager to Sign the WDNR Consent Order for Radium. Would you read the title and so forth?
Motion 18-5-1-2, authorizing the City Manager to Execute Wisconsin DNR Consent Order, Waiver and Stipulation, Requiring Actions to Reduce Combined Radium 226 and Radium 228.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move we adopt motion 18-5-1-2.
Is there a second?
I got a second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We've been bouncing this around all of this item, so this is the motion.
This is the consent order. We received a notice of violation last, actually, maybe the end of October, beginning of November. I don't know if you remember that. We attended a enforcement conference, I think it was in February, and they finally have finalized the consent order, and you have it in your packet. That's the document that I'll have to sign. Gave you a little bit of information on it, but well, number four, which is the one at Franklin Street and Owen Street, next to Memorial Park there, exceeded the maximum permissible level of radium 226 and 228, called combined radium, and for what they call the running annual average. So if you took all the ones that were taken in a one-year period, and you averaged them together, and it exceeded the MCL, the MPO, that meant we exceeded it, and we have to take action, which is what happened. So from the end of '16 to the, till the November of '17, we had four samples. Three of them were over, and they were over by enough to require some sort of action on the correction. There are several different methods for correcting it. We're going to have to do a study. Engineers will have to come in and make a determination of what's the best method for correcting it. There are a couple of easy ones. There are a couple expensive ones, and then there are all kinds in between. They're going to try and come in and put together a recommendation that looks at all of them, and makes, gives us some sort of idea of what the options, the best options would be. Other than that, are there any questions?
By approving the consent order, are we also authorizing the study?
I kind of anticipated it, but I haven't got the information yet. Basically, it requires, it reads right in there that the study is required. I will bring it forward because it does have a dollar amount attached to it, a pretty significant dollar amount attached to it, but I, it's kind of like, you've signed the consent order, you've agreed to do it, but at least you should know how much it's costing you. And that won't, that's, that's the cheap part. I mean, one... I mean, when we actually have to do the work, then it gets expensive.
Will the ratepayers be the ones that are actually paying for the study?
Yes, this is all coming out of the utilities, so it's all ratepayer form.
And you said this is, a lot of cities have this happening?
Yes, a lot of cities that have deep wells. Now, you'll note, now, one of the most famous ones is Waukesha. And if you read the history on Waukesha's, they tried about, just about everything possible to reduce their combined radium problem. They got to the point where there was no action available to them. They finally ended up convincing the Great Lakes Pact Compact to let them push water over the continental barrier there, where the water, the Great Lakes Combine says that you can only take water out of the lake to service areas that provide water to the lake. Well, Waukesha is just over the hill. But they, they were able to convince them and they got permission to attach to the Milwaukee utility in order to be able to give water, which is going to be very similar to what's happening at Foxconn. Racine is in the combine, in the continental compact. The Foxconn is not, but Foxconn is going to buy from Racine. And so there's some manipulation of the agreement there. But, so Waukesha had it, New Berlin had it, there are a lot of cities. Marshall had it, Sauk had it. In fact, we, we reviewed a lot of the ones that had work done, and what kind of work they've done and how much it had cost them.
Well, I was just asking that kind of for the public.
This is the compact that prevented Arizona and other places from siphoning water from the Great Lakes.
Well, in Waukesha.
Now open Pandora's box, so. Okay, any, let's get back on the topic here. Any questions about this item? Otherwise, let's call the question. Go ahead.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item S. Would you read Resolution eighteen-three-four, please?
Resolution eighteen dash thirteen, in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills from Stephen Velo. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Stephen Velo for his years of loyal service to the city of Lake Mills and its citizens. And whereas Stephen Velo has served the Public Works Department of the, of the city with a desire to provide the highest level of service through his valuable talents and expertise in the Streets Department as a heavy equipment operator. And whereas Stephen Velo has devoted numerous hours to provide positive contributions to the operations of the Streets Department while exhibiting the highest level of loyalty to the city and enthusiasm for his profession. And whereas Stephen Velo's attention to detail, professionalism and ability as a heavy equipment operator and problem solver have made a lasting contribution to the city of Lake Mills. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career of Stephen Velo and extends best wishes for an enjoyable retirement.
Okay. Do we have a plaque for him tonight?
We do.
He's not coming tonight, though.
Oh, he's not coming tonight. How many years do we know how many years he's served the city?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? Twenty-three years for the city of Lake Mills. We're going to miss him. Another one of our valuable employees jumping ship here for retirement purposes. I can't understand why. Oh, wow. But we already do have someone on board or will soon?
No, we do have someone on board. We were interviewing for Don Horace. And so we were prepared to follow up right behind because we already had Steve's notice of retirement. So we thought we'd get him on and get him a little bit up to speed earlier.
Well, it's good to hear because good people are hard to find. And we all wish Stephen the best and we need to vote, I mean, make a motion too, right? We haven't done that yet, have we?
I move adoption of Resolution eighteen thirteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's vote on this.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And now we can formally wish him the best wishes in his retirement and thank him for his years of service. Okay. Moving on. Item G, Resolution eighteen-four, County Highway Aid. Would you read the title for that, please?
Resolution eighteen dash fourteen, petition for County Highway Aid.
Okay, Steve, or who's the speaker for this one?
I'll take it. This is just where, if we put money into a county account, which is listed there at three thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars, they match it. So it's just a doubling of the money that we get.
Housekeeping?
Yeah, we've done this every year.
Every year, right.
Yeah.
Okay. It's called, if we don't do it, we don't get the money.
Yes, but it does have some requirements with it. It requires us to at least consider them for certain types of maintenance projects, which this year we are one. They're getting a pretty substantial maintenance contract from us.
Okay. So it's a good, a good deal for us and so, any questions for Steve? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion on this resolution.
I move we adopt Resolution eighteen fourteen.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay. Item H, Resolution eighteen fifteen, would you please read that title?
Resolution eighteen dash fifteen, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
Okay, I'm just moving my computer here. So, let's see what's here. There I am. Is this Betsy?
Yes.
Yes, go for it, Betsy.
All right. You have already passed a resolution early March, your first meeting in March. In that resolution were items that we had on the capital budget. And this is traditionally what we do. We would borrow for those items. Since the South Main Street project has been postponed, Steve has the need to revamp our projects this year. And because of that, we have new items that would be coming on with the South Main Street item coming off. So this is a list of the items that we would be adding to the items that you've already approved on March sixth. So you'll see that in the attachment B twenty eighteen.
Just pulling that up. So would you mind just reading what those items are on that list?
Sure.
You don't have to do all the amounts of the money.
Okay.
If people want to know, they can go to the website and look at it. But it's just what projects we are.
Right, we're looking at library, driveways and parking lot, walkway in Wallace Park. We're doing an additional eight hundred thousand dollars in street maintenance. You already approved the first eight hundred thousand, so we're doubling that. We have additional Highway eighty-nine engineering due to the postponement. Mulberry Street property acquisition, sidewalk, computer replacement program. We're going to be replacing quite a few of the computers due to some technology changes. The utility items on there are on there because the borrowing has been postponed. So these items may be, may begin prior to the funding coming. And so I added those on. So we already had a bank note for the AMI program. So we would refund that through this borrowing. Mulberry Street Electric, road patching for the lead service line and other repairs for water and the digging and replacement for those lead service lines for water and some additional road repairs.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution eighteen fifteen?
I move Resolution eighteen dash fifteen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions?
Are all of these items that we're adding to this reimbursement, were they already in our twenty eighteen capital improvement budget?
For instance, the street maintenance for eight hundred thousand dollars was not in your original, that was not in the, in the budget. So we had eight hundred thousand for twenty nineteen and now we're going to do that in twenty eighteen instead.
I think we have to formally amend our budget in order to do this.
The money was in the budget.
For this, for the South Main Project.
For road projects. And so the, we had over a million dollars for the South Main Street project, which we're not going to spend. So what we did was we shifted that funds into the maintenance fund. And then the eight hundred thousand dollars that we had for next year will go towards the South Main Street project. So it's, it's in the budget. It's actually less than what's in the budget now.
But is it budgeted for the items that are going to be spent?
It's budgeted for roadwork.
Do all of these fall under roadwork?
Well, maybe. Not the walkway at Wallace Park.
The eight hundred thousand dollars does.
What about the Wallace Park walkway?
It does not.
Was that in the budget?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Would there be any harm in tabling this until the next meeting so that we can formally amend our budget?
I think there will be.
It's, the next meeting is when we will start the resolution process for the borrowing itself. The reason that I wanted to put these items on here right away is in the event of expenditures prior to the borrowing in place, we want to make sure we're covered. We have a window of time.
At your next meeting, can you at least have the amendment of the budget on the agenda so that we can play catch-up and fix the lack of the amendment?
And put that on the agenda?
Before the other item?
Yeah, before we do the borrowing.
We're just dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Yeah, because if we're going to change the expenditure of funds that, from what it was previously budgeted, we do have to, as a council, make that formal change.
But if we pass this resolution tonight, it would give you what you need to act.
This resolution does not require that we make these expenditures. So that's something to bear in mind with going forward with this resolution today.
Then why is it so important, important we do it tonight?
Because we have a window of time of expenditures. We can go back a certain number of days, but we can't go, you know, we want to make sure that we're capturing it and not, anything that we may have already spent needs to be within that window.
Yeah, if we don't expend it, nobody cares. If we do expend it, we have to have this done by this date.
Right.
So.
Well, I agree with Vicki. I think, I, you know, I think we should put it on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not, it's not optional. It has to be done.
So we can act on this tonight and on the agenda, we're saying it right now, we'll expect to see a budget amendment? Is that what it would be, budget amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm not the best on budgets, so. Okay, any other questions and comments before we vote? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four-one.
Your new vote is under, noted, thank you. Okay. And taking us to, the ordinance eleven eighty-seven, would you please read that for us?
Ordinance eleven eighty-seven, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map, number six. The City Council of the City of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Section one pursuant to Wisconsin Statute sixty-six point one zero zero one subsection four, the city of Lake Mills is authorized to amend its comprehensive plan, which was adopted on February seventeenth, two thousand nine. Section two, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan amendment on April twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, and recommended to the council approval of the amendment. Section three, the amendment to the comprehensive plan is to the future land use map and the property affected by the proposed amendment to the plan is parcel two-four-six zero-seven-one-three-one-one-one-two-zero-zero-eight. Section four, the ordinance modifies map six, future land use map from single-family residential to mixed residential for this parcel, which is located on County Road B, just north of County Road V. Section five, the proposed and current land use maps at that location are attached to this ordinance and incorporated herein, with the proposed land use map being adopted as an amendment to future land use map six through enactment of this ordinance. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as required by law.
Okay. Steve, are you the speaker? This is ordinance first reading?
Yes. This is seventeen acres across from Tiger Needa Park. There's a proposal to build condos on the site. It requires a land use amendment, or future land use amendment. So it's this yellow site right here.
And it's going from single-family to multi-family? Or did I get that wrong?
No, I don't think it's multi-family.
Mixed.
Mixed, oh, okay. So what falls under mixed?
Condos.
Oh, condos.
Zero lot lines.
I wonder, I mean, okay. So we're looking at condos there. This is the first reading. We will have three readings. Do we have any anticipation of this having to be pushed faster?
No.
No, so we will have three readings on this. Okay. No action taken on that. We can move on? Okay, ordinance eleven eighty-eight, hang on a minute, let me get to it. Oops, went the wrong direction. Just read the title for this one.
Ordinance eleven eighty-eight, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map, number six.
Okay, and, hold on a minute, I'm just trying to get. Okay, this is the land, I've got to find where I am here. Yeah, across the street from Culvers.
Yes.
Okay, and this is changing it from single-family residential to planned business district.
That's correct.
And on Elm Street. Do we need to say more about that at this point? This also will have two more readings?
It could. You've already rezoned the property. I don't know that you need to wait.
Well.
I guess there's no rush.
Let's do at least a second reading next time. And then if nobody shows any interest, we can always do a third at that time. Okay, let's move on to ordinance eleven eighty-nine, same thing on that one.
Ordinance eleven eighty-nine, amending comprehensive plan, future land use map, number six.
You read faster than I move on my computer. So, okay, let's see what's here. There we go. And this one, there we go. This is on Ferry Drive. Well, this is the one we talked about at the last meeting where they're changing the land use so that there can be a single family.
Single house, yeah.
Single house. So, okay, and again, this, do we have any knowledge that this has to be rushed through? Could a second and third reading be next time?
We could definitely do a second. We could definitely do a second reading.
Okay, and then maybe third next time with it?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody has a problem? If there was nobody showing any concern at the Planning Commission, so this, as far as we know, everybody's happy with this change. Okay, going on to then, so next ordinance, go ahead.
Ordinance eleven ninety, Amending Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Number Six.
Okay. And. Yes, now this is. This is the one at the church?
Yes.
Yes, this is part of the property of Real Hope Church has, is being cut off and made into single-family housing?
Yes. The actual parcel has been cut off for several years now. They recently are in the process of trying to sell it to a developer who would like to convert it into single-family homes. So they, you'll see a preliminary plat later in the meeting and a rezoning request for this site. So yeah, this is, this is consistent. You see that the yellow matches all the rest of the, some division across the street, so in this area right here.
It was a public hearing.
Yeah, it went through a public hearing. Plan Commission made the recommendation.
And there were no?
No concerns.
No concerns, nobody upset about it or anything?
Nobody spoke of.
Okay, is this of time of the essence?
No, I think we, you may want to do it at the second one.
Okay, so.
But.
Okay, so letting the public know that the next meeting, we may do second and third reading.
Yeah. Even the third reading, I think, their final plat won't be here until the.
Okay, so we're fine.
Yeah.
So tonight is first reading and at the fastest would be second and third at the next one, but maybe not even that. Might be just second. Okay, item M, would you read that one title?
Ordinance eleven ninety-one, Amending Sections ten dash three dash two dash A Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel two four six oh seven one four one eight one four oh two five.
And this is the one that goes with the last ordinance. So those two would probably go hand in hand when we do do them. So there will be a second reading on this at the next meeting and possibly a third, but at least a second for sure. Okay?
Is there gonna be roadwork involved in this? Is there another street going in there? Or is that?
No, there's no street.
Some lots look like they'll be deeper than the ones in that area.
There are no streets involved. I think they were looking to get this square footage to meet the R. And that's the way that, the parcel was actually cut off to get the main parcel under ten acres. So that's a three point four acre parcel. I have a little over a thirteen acre original parcel. And they can subdivide it in a fashion that's consistent with what single-family would use, so I can show you, well, yeah, here.
Okay, then we'll move back to second reading next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Item N, Resolution eighteen sixteen, would you read that, please?
Resolution eighteen dash sixteen, Preliminary Plat Approval Crestview Meadows Subdivision. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills pursuant to authority conferred by statutes of the state of Wisconsin has established certain standards and procedures for subdivisions within the corporate limits of the City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, and within one and one-half mile thereof. And whereas the developer of the proposed Crestview Meadows subdivision has submitted certain documents for review and approval by the City of Lake Mills. And whereas an application for preliminary plat approval has been requested. And whereas the city manager, consulting engineer, planner, and the city staff have reviewed the various documents needed for submittal and have made recommendations concerning approval of said preliminary plat, subject to certain conditions. And whereas the Public Works Board has reviewed the plans and documents and determined that the infrastructure is generally satisfactory and in the prescribed form. And whereas the Plan Commission has reviewed the plans and documents and determined that they are generally satisfactory and in the prescribed form. Be it therefore resolved this first day of May, two thousand eighteen, by the City Council of the City of Lake Mills, that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby approve the Crestview Meadows subdivision preliminary plat and hereby authorizes the council president to sign the motion of said preliminary plat approval, subject to submission of all supporting documentation in proper form, including the preliminary plat will not be authorized and that the plat not deemed approved until the plat meets all conditions noted in the planners' and engineers' memos.
Okay, so this, we do take action on tonight, Steve?
Yes.
Because you need that to go on with the other pieces?
Yes, it needs, it'll go back to the Plan Commission and the Public Work Board as the final plat.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll be done with the process probably early June.
I'd like a motion for this. Resolution eighteen sixteen.
I move we adopt Resolution eighteen sixteen.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Now, is there anything else we need to talk about on this before we, the Planning Commission, this is fine?
Yeah, the Planning Commission didn't have any.
Concerns.
Concerns, issues about it. The only thing that was brought up was the, in Dustin's memo, the option of not allowing a driveway on what's the road? Brookstone Drive? Or making the condition that nothing within seventy-five feet of this, of the highway?
Intersection.
Intersection there. But no recommendations were made to change anything on it, just that that was a concern.
Will that come back here again after it goes back to?
Yes.
So this will be revisited by the powers that be here?
Will there be a fee in Lula Parkland for this?
No, that was included as part of the Brookstone subdivision.
No, that was originally an outlot, I believe. I don't think that was included.
It was gonna be a.
It was going to be like.
Convenience store or something.
So that might be something you might want to look into whether or not they need to do a fee in Lula Parkland.
There's the plat. There are eight lots. This lot up here is the one that Mike was talking about that had the driveway issues. And they did recommend some restrictions as, that's why it says, recommendations of the planner and engineer, so.
So are they suggesting that there not be a driveway on Brookstone?
They, the engineer did, the planner did not. And what the public, Plan Commission approved was the planner's recommendation of seventy-five feet off of one intersection and fifty feet off the other.
Twenty-five feet off the other one, I think?
Yeah, something like that. It, it made for a very small.
And a small window where you could place it.
Yeah.
But it's really important to not have them coming out right at that corner.
Right.
Not at the corner and also coming out onto Brookstone like that, especially where it is right there when the people come across the highway or come off the road there. They're not always down to twenty-five right away.
The normal issue is queuing because the traffic tends to back up and you get a line. And then, yeah, the other one here is as you get traffic coming off of the and into this area, they tend not to slow down right away.
Right.
Is there a notation to that effect on the plat?
That we're asking for.
Okay. Couldn't we have?
If you look at Dustin's memo, he's got it highlighted and red on the picture.
Couldn't we have it that the driveway has to come out on Crestview Lane instead? Can't the house just be oriented that way?
Yeah, and that's where they recommend.
They discussed that at Plan Commission. They opted not to do it because it really restricts the type of house construction.
Yeah, well, I think there are a lot of people in town who'd just be happy to have a house in Lake Mills. They'll put their driveway wherever we tell them, I think. Well, you know, there's, there are people lining up to do that, so.
I think though that, that if you look at the conditions in most areas, this, they're, the driveways aren't, you can look at Peace Mills Drive, right down there at the end where they intersect, both those driveways are closer than seventy-five feet to that intersection.
Okay, well, I've said my piece, so. Okay, resolution, we have a motion and a second. Do we want to take a vote? Take a vote, yes.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero, resolution, sorry, yes, passed five zero.
Okay. Item nine, Recommendation for Future Agendas. We already have the ones put on it for the budget, right? Okay, and, and if, you know, if anybody comes up with something, we can add things anytime. Okay.
We do have quite a few items for that meeting. We'll have all the license renewals.
Oh, yes.
And the bid awards for the asphalt and concrete work. And then you'll have all the readings of the ordinances you just had again.
Okay. Okay, Heather, would you read number ten for me, please?
Convenient to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes nineteen point eight five one G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved.
Okay, we need a motion to move into closed session?
So move.
Second. You pick, one there and one there. I don't care which. So I have a motion and a second to move into closed session. All those. I'm in a hurry.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay.